All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Really appreciate people being here, visitors, people who are on the agenda. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order here on August 23rd, 2022, and ask the city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Gold?
Present.
Commissioner Guess?
Present. I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. I knew she wasn't. I'm so sorry.
Commissioner Henderson?
Begins with a G.
He's so anxious.
You gotta move seats.
Commissioner Henderson?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Bray?
I am present. Okay, we'll, Commissioner Wilson's gonna give the invocation, and we'll remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the beautiful day that we've had to enjoy. Thank you for the ability for us together, together. And please guide us as we make decisions on behalf of the citizens of our community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing we have this evening is actually a public hearing for the Paducah CDBG grant for the Paducah-McRacken County Senior Center Community Development. So I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Commission, as part of the application process, there's required to have a public hearing. And then we have tonight some of our partners that are working on this on behalf of the Senior Center from the ad. We have Rachel Foley and then Jeremy. And I'll turn it over to whichever one that, and Rachel. Looks, I saw Jeremy point at you, so welcome to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Foley, and I work for the Purchase Area District Development Office.
Welcome.
Thank you. The City of Paducah is working in conjunction with the Paducah-McRacken County Senior Center and proposing to build a 7,000-square-foot building located at 1600 Kentucky Avenue. An architect has been hired to construct and updated and improve senior center, which is estimated with a probable cost of 4.3 million. The new center will provide more space to meet the current demand and allow for future growth. The City of Paducah is applying for a 1.5-million community development block grant to help fund this project. The CDBG program provides assistance to communities for use in revitalizing neighborhoods, expanding affordable housing and economic opportunities, and improving community facilities. With the participation of their citizens, communities can devote these funds to a wide range of activities that best serve their own particular development priorities if they meet at least one of the three national objectives. For the 2022 funding cycle, the DLG will receive an estimated 27 million for distribution. Funds are designated for various programs, and all cities and counties are eligible to apply for the funds with the exceptions of entitlement communities that receive CDBG funds directly from HUD. For a project to be funded, a determination must be made regarding project needs, reasonability of cost, and overall effectiveness. CDBG funds are federal funds allocated by HUD and must comply with numerous federal regulations. The City of Paducah and Paducah-McRacken County Senior Center notified the pad office with their intentions to apply for the grant. PAD staff are providing assistance in making this application, making this application, and they are due to the DLG by August 31st of this year. If the grant is awarded, the City of Paducah will be the sub-recipient of the funds. PAD will help administer the project. If there are any questions or comments or concerns, I can take those now. But if not, that concludes my notice.
Mayor Commission, in relationship to CDBG fundings, you may recall that sometimes there's restrictions on having multiple CDBG applications open. Just want to let you know that this avenue of the CDBG does not preclude us from exploring other options. We do have a CDBG grant that is currently open, and hopefully we'll be able to close it out this fall. But this, supplying for this one does not have bearing on that one that's currently open. And it does not, once we close that one out, prevent us from exploring another one. So it doesn't restrict us in that phrase.
We appreciate the help, the assistance of the pad office in getting this ready. For them, it's a really great, could be a really great project for our community to have this new center.
Yeah, actually, you know, the Senior Center, I've been working with the board over there quite a bit. We've actually got an appointment tonight that we're making. And, you know, they have a real need. They're in a space where they, they're gonna get displaced because of the city's decision to vacate that building. And, of course, the pandemic has set them back a bit, you know, just like it has a lot of people, a lot of organizations for actually in-person activities. But it's very important, you know, function in the community to serve our seniors. And there's, you know, I've been over there and observed a lot of the things that they do. And so this is really much needed in the community. I think one of the things, I see we have a county commissioner here tonight. You know, the city is helping with this. I'm sure there's going to be, I know the Senior Citizens Center themselves has some funds available that they can contribute to the project. I'm sure, I know they're gonna go out in the community and fundraise as well. I think there's a real opportunity with that. And the city and county are gonna be, you know, asked to participate at some level, you know, going forward. So it's gonna take some time, but it's really, it's really an outstanding project for the community. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Rachel.
Okay, we have one, we have a new associate that we'd like to provide the opportunity for John Perkins to introduce tonight. Are you reminding her of her name?
Wait till you hear her name. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, city manager, and city clerk. This is Annie Yelly Ariano Tapia. Say that three times quickly. Annie Yelly. Annie Yelly, I've been kidding her all day long, putting pressure on her, telling her that she, I wanted to make sure she had her speech prepared, and she's ready. Annie Yelly started with us last week, and you'll see her smiling face in our shop as a revenue technician one in the finance firm. Annie Yelly is a 2018 graduate of Murray State University, and she's very quiet. She's self-motivated, she's smart, and a very positive person. And she's eager to learn, which is the best kind. And we're glad to have Annie Yelly on board. Do you have anything you want to say?
Thank you for having me.
Welcome, Annie Yelly. Welcome. It's really important that you can add and subtract down there in that department. That's kind of a critical skill set. But you'll be under good tutelage with John and the team down there. We have a great finance department. And we have a good reputation for managing, you know, finances very well. And we really appreciate your interest in the city, and we hope that you have a great career here.
Thank you. I hope too, as well.
Okay.
You're welcome. Thank you.
City manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, none this evening.
Okay, before we get into the consent agenda, I just thought I'd make a couple of remarks. There was a group of us in Louisville last week, and we went to a meeting. And at that meeting, we took the opportunity to meet with Wayland Ventures, our development partner for the city block project. It's been delayed for a number of reasons, COVID, the economy. I mean, there's any number of reasons. So we thought the timing was good for us to sit down and really get a good idea of what was going on. So it was myself and our city manager and Commissioner Henderson. And really, it was the best meeting that we've had with Wayland since I've known them. And they explained a lot of, you know, a lot about what was going on with the project and where we were. Chris Black, Ray Black &amp; Sons, is doing the parking lot work. And so there's a lot of preparation, planning going into that process right now. And one of the things that we asked them about was actually coming to Paducah and meeting with us and some key stakeholders. So that's in the planning stages. It hadn't been finalized yet. But even though the project is delayed somewhat, I was very encouraged by the meeting is exactly where we are with the project and how it's gonna be, how it's gonna play out. So more to come on that, but I just thought I'd give a little bit of an update. I know people are asking, you know, hard dates, when's construction gonna start? You know, when, how long am I gonna be able to use the parking lot? These are natural questions that my wife is asking me as well. So I certainly understand. And I think we're getting closer to getting those answers as soon as possible. So I just thought I'd provide a little bit of an update. So we'll move to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member's sole request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The city clerk will read the items recommended for approval unless any commissioner would like an item removed for separate discussion. Okay, so I'll ask the city clerk to go ahead and read the items recommended for approval.
Approve minutes for the August 9th, 2022 Paducah Board of Commissioners meeting. Receive and file documents: Reappointment of Jim Chapman to the Board of Adjustment. Said term shall expire August 31st, 2026. Reappointment of Paul Bradford and Kathy Crisilius to the Paducah Planning Commission. Said term shall expire August 31st, 2026. Appointment of Dr. Simone A. Fearon to the Paducah-McRacken County Senior Citizens Center. Board to replace Bill Bone, who resigned. Said term shall expire June 30th, 2023. Appointment of Stacy W. Drake and Whitney Revelette Wallace to the Civic Beautification Board. Said term shall expire July 1st, 2026. Personnel actions: A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a declaration of trust and trust participation agreement with the Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services for the Workers Compensation Trust. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a declaration of trust and trust participation agreement with the Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services for the General Insurance Trust.
So moved. Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, we have two municipal orders tonight to talk about. The first one is our build grant. And so I'll invite Rick Murphy to come up and tell us about it. We were all waiting with bated breath to know more about the build grant and what's going on on the riverfront.
Okay, I got good news tonight, Mayor, Commission, city manager. We have cleared all the hurdles to have the money, the $10.4 million obligated to the City of Paducah. And we're in a position now to sign the agreement. You all have to vote to sign the agreement. We're, if it's a single reading municipal order, once we have that, and we made the deadline of September 30th of this year, which was critical that we do on that. And since May of 2020, we've been basically just satisfying the government requirements for this money.
Environmental?
Environmental, just all the prerequisites necessary to position us to spend the money.
It's good news.
Now, of course, we have our team here. I've got members of our team here that, if you wanted to ask any questions about some of the things to get to this point, you could. But if you did not, it's more of a, just more of an exercise of signing this agreement to allocate the money.
So where do we go from here?
Right now, we're currently under design. We got permission to start our design process early. And HDR, coupled with BFW, local engineers here, are, will be looking at 30% plans, to be looking at those here soon so we can get some cost opinion, see whether or not we need to scope it down or scope it up. That's coming up in September, so we're well on the way.
It's great news. Great news.
So I have a question. You know, when you start to drive, you drive through the opening of the flood wall where I think it's gonna be.
Okay, there's several. There's thirty.
Well, let me just ask this. Okay. So along the riverfront, along the Greenway Trail, those trees have really grown up a lot.
Between Broadway and Kentucky.
Yes. If you are driving through there, you really can't see the river because the trees are so tall. Will those trees stay there, or will they be lower, removed during any of this?
That's in another part where we want to get a grant for, between Broadway and Kentucky, to do that work there.
Yeah, I'm, sorry, I'm Broadway and Jefferson.
Yes, right.
Between Broadway and Jefferson. I had to stop and think. Going back up toward.
Oh, no, no.
Toward the boat dock, right?
Right now.
Between the trains at boat dock, between there.
Okay, between Jefferson and going towards that area. The trees that are up in the park area are gonna stay?
That are on the part there.
On the riverbank, I'm just.
Yeah, the riverbank is what I'm asking.
The trees that are up on the bank are gonna stay. We're gonna look at that, but we still need to be protecting the river's edge. We want to have more visibility, to have a more attractive look, but we also need to look at our money. See, that's the whole purpose of the 30%. If we start getting down on the slope, we're gonna spend a lot of money on the slope. Can we remove the trees? Absolutely. We need to just look at what we have in the 30% plans for that because the boats are gonna be there. And the design team here, they can tell you that I've been telling them, we need to have a very attractive look from where that wedge, we're referring to it, is gonna be to welcome people to Paducah.
Well, if you're standing up there looking on the river, it's hard to even see the river because they've grown up so much. So I think it is something that we should look at, if they can be cut down, I mean, cut back, removed.
Yeah, I've had input from citizens about it. I mean, people are noticing it, you know.
Yeah, and we need to get further. I mean, even, I think, when was it, a couple of, a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago, we were down there, and we were talking about that very subject, about how to make that look dressier, more vibrant, and be able to see the river without the interference of what's growing on the bank.
Okay. I just wondered if that could be part of this, or if not, we still need to look at it because I have had several complaints about it recently. But moving forward, I'm so excited about this build grant.
Thank you.
So thank you for all of the hard work everyone has done.
Yeah, good work, good work.
We really appreciate it. I can't wait to see it.
It's these people out here, we're just here, we're just here to help guide and be frustrated.
Now, we've got good partners, so thank you all.
It makes seem getting the grant now the easiest part of all of it.
Just if we get some grant like that, let's just not say we're gonna start work in the next 12 months because we've been better than 24 months just getting qualified.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll ask the city clerk to read it.
Our proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Accepting Grant Funds to the U.S. Department of Transportation, Maritime Administration (MERAD), for a Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development, Build Grant in an Amount of $10,400,000 to Improve the Paducah Riverfront and Pedestrian Corridor from the Convention Center to Downtown, and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute the Grant Agreement and All Documents Related to Same."
So moved.
Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
May I ask one more question about that? I'm sorry. When we're in DC as a community, we have a meeting with MERAD. Is there anything that we could take with us just to show them, would there be anything enough on the drawings?
When's your meeting?
September 20th. And it should be with a new.
When's our 30% plan?
Something that we, just something that we could show.
We could have some concepts or some, you know.
Are either of you all going on that trip? Okay, so.
That'd be great. We might do that. It's with Ann Phillips. And it's supposed to be with the new head of MERAD. So that'd be great. We could just show something with that. That'd be great. You say that honestly? Yeah, right.
Awesome. Okay, we have a second municipal order to approve tonight, and I'll let the city clerk read it first.
Our proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Paducah Junior College Incorporated in an Amount of $100,000 for the Community Scholarship Program."
So moved.
Second.
City manager?
Mayor Commission, as part of your budget process, you allocated funds to continue to support this community scholarship program with Paducah Junior College in the amount of $100,000. And this is the formalizing the mayor to execute that agreement.
So just to refresh everybody's memory, this is, the community scholarship program is the program through WKCTC where, from contributions from the community, city, county, others, we guarantee free tuition for two years for everybody in the community. And so it's very important, you know, that we continue to support the program. It's a great, it's a great program for our community. And so it's something that the city's, the city, I'm told, before me, but we were actually one of the founding donors.
With Rotary.
With Rotary, okay. And so, anyway, it's something that really pays dividends here in the community, so. Okay, city clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
And at this point, we've got one ordinance to adopt. And I'll let the city clerk read it.
Our proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 2022-06-8740, entitled 'An Ordinance Adopting the City of Paducah Annual Operating Budget for the Fiscal Year, July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, by Estimating Revenues and Resources and Appropriating Funds for the Operation of City Government.'" This ordinance is summarized as follows. "Amend the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022 and ending June 30, 2023 as follows: Transfer $113,082 from the Fleet Lease Fund fund balance to account 71000210540050, Fleet Lease Vehicles, and transfer $155,793 from Solid Waste Fund fund balance to account 5002209540050, Solid Waste Vehicles."
So moved. Second.
Any questions from commissioners? This is second reading, so. Call roll.
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, we have two ordinances to introduce tonight. The first of which is an alley closure. So Rick, you wanna let her read it first? And then we'll ask you to tell us what it's about.
Our proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for the Closing of a 3,528.36-square-foot alley north of George Street and between South Third Street and South Fourth Street, the closure of 1,004-square-foot alley south of Husband Street between South Third Street and South Fourth Street, and the closure of a portion of 1,103.73-lineral feet of the west side of South Fourth Street, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same." This ordinance is summarized as follows: "That the City of Paducah does hereby authorize the closing of a 3,528.36-square-foot alley north of George Street and between South Third Street and South Fourth Street, the closure of 1,004-square-foot alley south of Husband Street between South Third Street and South Fourth Street, and the closure of a portion of 1,103.73-lineral feet of the west side of South Fourth Street, and authorizes, empowers, and directs the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed from the City of Paducah to the property owner in or abutting the public way to be closed."
Rick?
I'm sure you all have that mapped in your head right now of all this, of what she just read. Just a quick explanation of that. With X-Tech Precision Fire that they had some time ago.
Yeah.
Okay. With them submitting their site plans and updating their site, we just noticed a lot of paperwork and stuff that needed to be cleaned up, and it was an excellent time to do that. We have two dead-end alleys that come in off the two streets. One's Elizabeth, I mean, one's Husband's, one's George Street, that we're not using. They're just, they're just out there, and they could be put to better use for the property owners for business on that. And then that portion of Fourth Street that runs from Husband's to George Street, they're already occupying that space with an encroachment agreement. And prior to them being there, there used to be a lot of houses there, a lot of gun barrel houses. Well, there won't be gun barrel houses there in the future. And right across the street from that is an area that is, fills up. We refer to it as the Cooper Watside, you know, drainage pond where the water backs up from Island Creek. So that, right away going down through there was excessively wide, and we didn't need that much. So we're closing a portion of that so they can make better use of that property for their business and enjoyment there.
I see. I actually stopped by to talk with them at the job fair today. And, you know, they were, you know, very appreciative of all the city's efforts. And they really haven't missed, I mean, the fire, they never missed a beat, you know, with the fire. And I mean, and, you know, the big issue they've got is the same issue that most people have, is they need more people.
Right.
You know, in order to get things done, so.
Well, they're a great, they're a great company for Paducah. They employ a lot of people.
They are.
And so this is a way that we felt like we could help them and help their business excel.
Okay, thanks, Rick.
Need a motion and a second on that one.
Oh, okay.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so now we turn. All right, so now we turn our attention to the much-awaited interlocal cooperation agreement with the county fiscal court on the new outdoor sports complex. You know, the city and county signed memo, memorandum of understanding about a year ago. And since that time have been working, working toward this day. The agreement has, you know, has a lot, has taken a lot of twists and turns, and it's, there's a lot of detail in it, you know, that's going to hold both the city and the county's feet to the fire, you know, over the life of this agreement. So, first of all, there is one, one thing I need to just point out. The, the agreement that we're going to approve tonight has a slight wording change from what the county approved last night. And I've talked with Judge Executive Craig Clymer today, and so we've, we've, we, we agree on the change in the wording. It's very slight, really doesn't change the meaning of the overall agreement. It's something that our attorneys had recommended. And so when the county votes on their, two weeks from now, when they, when, when we all vote, actually, we will make that, make that change. So, you know, maybe I'll ask the city clerk to please read it, and then we'll have some discussion.
Our proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Approving an Interlocal Cooperation Agreement Among the County of McCracken, Kentucky, the City of Paducah, Kentucky, and the McCracken County Sports Tourism Commission for the Development and Operation of the Paducah-McCracken County Athletic Complex, and authorizing the mayor of the City of Paducah to execute and deliver said agreement and all legal documents related thereto, and to take all such further action on behalf of the city deemed reasonable and necessary in order to carry out the terms and conditions of said agreement. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah does hereby approve an interlocal cooperation agreement among the County of McCracken, Kentucky, the City of Paducah, Kentucky, and the McCracken County Sports Tourism Commission for the Development and Operation of the Paducah-McCracken County Athletic Complex. Further, this ordinance authorizes the mayor to execute the interlocal cooperation agreement together with such other agreements, instruments, or certifications, including the ground lease, which may be reasonable and necessary to accomplish the development, financing, construction, and operation of the project."
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I'll, I'll kick it off with some, you know, maybe a little bit of discussion. First of all, I'm super excited about finally getting this behind us. This is a project, if you go back in the history, the city is using 12 and a half million dollars of bonds that were originally sold for a wellness center that we subsequently decided not, not to move forward with. I think that all of us have felt, you know, very good about using the bond money that was originally deemed to be for an athletic complex, albeit an indoor athletic complex, to be used for an outdoor complex. You know, the sports tourism is, is a growing industry. And there's a lot of, a lot of folks who take their kids on the weekends to play soccer, baseball, softball, you name it. And I believe that this is something that's going to be, you know, excellent for, for our community. It's going to draw sports tourism families into the community. I believe that it's going to spur the development of more hotels. And, and, and the, the tax that is collected on more hotel rooms benefits both the city, the county, and the Sports Tourism Commission, you know, for further development of the facility. So it's, from my perspective, it's win-win-win. I, I want to give, you know, everybody an opportunity to, to weigh in on any questions they have on the agreement or any remarks they'd like to make.
Well, Mayor, I don't have any, any questions, but I too am excited that we're able to enter into this interlocal agreement, get this behind us. As I read through it, the only thought that I had, the only concern that I had is that I hope that we do not get so excited about this that we lose sight of our end-of-the-year deadline for the 911 interlocal agreement.
You know, that's, I'm glad you brought that up. You know, there was, we did have a hiccup, you know, relative to the negotiation of both those agreements. And, and I, I feel like that we have, you know, an agreement in good faith from the county that, you know, they have an increased sense of urgency around 911. And 911's a very complex situation. I'm attending the, the 911 committee meetings myself. We have a really group, good group of people who are working hard. We will receive, I am told, the RFP for that tomorrow. And so that's gonna, you know, that's gonna help us go to work and, and get out there with vendors and, and get some pricing on, on equipment and whatnot. So, so there, you know, we'll just have to see how, how it plays out from here.
One comment I had was, you know, of course, Stewart Nelson Park will now become part of the sportsplex. And I know that we, we are working, we're working on a contract with a company that does work with Brent Legs about assisting us with making sure that the integrity of that park or that's named for him now doesn't lose anything with it, that the Stewart Nelson Park will still become a part of it. And, and I think that there are plans that I had seen that Jeff Cantor had presented at one time that really was a beautiful part of the park that would honor that memory and still keep the integrity of Stewart Nelson Park intact. So I just want to make sure that that's addressed in here.
I'm sorry.
Well, I was gonna say, you know, Commissioner, that's a great point, and, and we took great pains to, to underscore that asset, that community asset, and, and how we, we do honor that legacy. And part of it is, is that part of the ILA has language in it that we will also still engage the community. How best to do that? One of the pre-development plans and considerations was something internal that really highlighted that, that legacy as possible as a plaza-type thing. But we were intentional in including language in the ILA that we would also get community input before we made a final decision on that.
Amen. Yeah, I know that we were, even from the, the very beginning, we've talked about honoring Stewart Nelson's legacy. And I know this is probably not the, the time, but I'd like to go on record even as seeing as we move forward, seeing that entire sports complex named after Stewart Nelson, along with the plaza and everything else that we're going to do there. I think honoring his legacy would be naming it Stewart Nelson Sportsplex.
Well, decision's not been made on that, but I, I can assure you, we'll, we'll have more discussions about that ongoing. I will say that the judge indicated that he would like to have a, a joint meeting between city and county in the next week or two to actually vote on, on this agreement. And so I suggested to him that there's a pavilion out there at Stewart Nelson Park, and I suggested that we hold the meeting there.
Wait, I thought I suggested that to you this morning.
You did. And I suggested it to the judge.
And I thought I wrote a note to you to suggest it, Mayor.
There is a nice bit being there, and I think that that would be a perfect setting to have if we're going to have a joint meeting. That's our only, going to be our only topic for that, that, that night anyways, is to have that in the background.
Well, I thought, I thought it was, I thought it was a good idea because, I mean, we're out there around ball fields. We're out there, you know, in the middle of an area that, you know, is, is certainly going to be used for the new, new complex. And, and, you know, I know the Sports Tourism Commission, you know, will be there, there. You know, it's, as the judge suggests, I think there's an opportunity for celebration. And I just thought it was a good setting. So I thought it was a good idea. So I took your suggestion.
And, and Mayor, I'm sure Darren, city manager, city manager will be on top of that for real because I reminded him to, to this evening that Stewart Nelson was actually born in Paris, Kentucky. So, great people come from Paris, Kentucky.
Great people stop over in Paris.
I don't want to give up my West Kentucky or South Kentucky.
You know, when, when Brent Legs or the company that he's working with that's working with us on the cultural study of historical locations is in town, I really want to make sure that he's engaged with the design and, and how that we can make sure that we keep all of that intact. For Stewart Nelson.
You know, I want to go on record as, you know, as expressing on behalf of the city appreciation on the part of the McCracken County Fiscal Court for their leadership in developing the project. You know, I think that when the city and county work together, we can accomplish great, great things. So sometimes we, we get stuck on the details and, but we have to keep the, the end goal always in mind, so.
Do we have a, are you going to look at some dates for?
I will. I'll let you know as soon as we have something. I know it'll, I know everybody will want to know it soon. Commissioner Guess?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I, I think you said it well. We had a hiccup, but we were always for it. You know, we were just trying to get the details, and, you know, sometimes, I know we were all getting phone calls, and why are you against this, and what, what's going on, but, you know, we were always for it, just.
Right.
You know, I'm just glad we're getting, putting a period on it.
Okay. With that, we'll move on. Do we have anything else there? We're good to go, move on, right? Okay. All right, we have one discussion item. And we'll ask our assistant city manager, Michelle Smolin, to, to talk. And I, and I know she's going to talk about this a little bit, but, so these are the priorities that we decided on February 1st, right after the 1st of the year, to focus on for 2022. And so we've had a lot going on, and sometimes, well, Michelle gives us a quarterly update. So I wanted, I had asked her to focus on what's actually been accomplished since the last update so that the commission could stay focused on where we are, what's been accomplished, what is yet to be accomplished, and so all of us could kind of weigh in on some of those things, so. Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor.
There's your introduction.
Great introduction. I'm just going to get right into it because I thought you laid it out really well. So as a reminder, we have 10 commission priorities and three continuous improvement items. Everything we'll be talking about tonight is available on our website at padukaky.gov/commissionpriorities. The report is available, all reports are available, what's been adopted, and the updates are on all of the webpages. So it's all available, everything we'll be talking about tonight. Mayor Bray, you covered this, our commission priority stages. We adopt these early in the year, and now we're in implementation and communication reporting, so I won't spend a lot of time here. And to your point, what you'll see in the report this quarter and what we'll be talking about are really what we call the latest updates. So this is a snip. You're not meant to be able to read this just to show how the update looks different and really focuses on what's been done since the past report. I will start with 911. This is meant to be interactive, so please ask questions, provide additional comments as you see necessary for each item. So we talked about this a little bit just a minute ago with the enhancement of urgency with the goal of completing an agreement by the end of this year that really focuses on governance and revenue. The RFP development is underway with federal engineering focusing on the RFP preparation, proposal evaluation, and contract negotiations related to updating our 911 radio equipment.
And I mentioned that the RFP should be here tomorrow, so that's, that's actually the latest and greatest, so.
Will you be getting that to us then?
We're gonna, it's gonna come to Lindsay, who's going to send it to Steve Doolittle, the deputy judge executive, and Darren. And then we've got to make sure there's, yes, I'm sure that you'll, you will see a copy of it. But it's, it must be in a controlled environment. It cannot, we have to make sure that everybody understands that it can't be shared beyond that. So I know Darren and Steve will be working through the, the constraints on that.
Just want to protect the RFP process.
So it's a qualified yes?
I got it. With beautification, we've talked about the Tyler 301 web portal and mobile app at, you know, pretty great lengths. We're continuing to push that and try and get more people using it. The top request is brush pickup, and we've had over 500 requests through June. We look at it quarterly, so we'll pull it again at the end of September. With beautification, what I really wanted to highlight is I know that this board really appreciates and sees the great importance that other boards and committees in the city play. And we actually have three boards working on beautification efforts in the city. So I think that's a really significant highlight. We have the Creative and Cultural Council that are looking at some temporary public art downtown. They worked on the Broadway Window Mur- mural project and a potential South Side public art installation. Main Street is looking at some improvements to the Third Street corridor, some streetscape-type improvements. And then I know the mayor has been talking with the Civic Beautification Board about expanding their role for a focused effort on beautification in 2023. So I think that shows the great partnership we have with the members of those boards and committees working towards this.
So I don't know if the other commissioners get, you know, get feedback, gets feedback, but I get regular feedback about trash pickup, you know, things, you know, beautifying certain parts of the city. I mean, probably once a week. I mean, and of course, that includes older buildings, dilapidated buildings that are, you know, on the demise, you know, what, you know, what's the city going to do? And certain, we're in control of some of those things and some we're not. But as it relates to cleanup or picking up, I, I am in discussions with the Civic Beautification Board about some sort of a campaign. So more to come on that. I don't know when the last time the city did a campaign. I mean, you know, a citywide campaign? I'm just not certain. I don't know if it in, but, but there is some discussion about that through the Civic Beautification Board. So it's a big task.
Yes.
Don't want to bite off more than we can chew. But it's, some improvement in that area is, is needed. I mean, you could, I guess you could say it's always needed. There's always an opportunity to clean up something somewhere, you know. But, but kind of getting organized with that, I think is something that would be, could really benefit the city and the, the community.
I agree, and our, I think we also discussed the communications manager joining you at that meeting so we can start to really look at what a campaign could look like and get her expertise as well. Okay. Looking at community growth, our planning department is collaborating with the county. The draft RFP for updating our comprehensive plan is, has been sent to the county to review. With the remote workers, we've had 27 applicants and four successful recipients. This is something we're looking at internally about potential opportunities to maybe reallocate that money or tweak that program a little bit, still focused on community growth and around economic development. So this is something that we're looking at, you know, with a potential recommendation in the future of how we could use those funds for a different program related to community growth.
Do we know why that if we had that many applicants, only four?
It really varies. I think it's hard to speak. I think it's hard to speak to each one. I know our Planning Director is here, we could, maybe it'd be good if we looked at that and sent that to you afterwards, because I think it's really varies based on an individual basis.
I mean, one of the things I said when Michelle and I were going over, Nick and I haven't talked about it, but, you know, it's kind of started in the pandemic, you know, as people started, more and more people working from home. You know, we, as Michelle said, we've had 27 applicants, but really only four successful recipients, so it kind of, it's kind of speaks to, we either need to change it or move in a different direction, you know, one way or the other, so that's something that I think, Michelle, we're going to be talking with Nick about or, you know, working on, you know, going forward, so.
In doing the, in sharing with us the 23 that were unsuccessful, could you also include the names and or persons that were successful? Kind of the kind of businesses that they're representing?
Yeah, let us take a look at kind of the data we have, and definitely we have that information, so we'll pull together some statistics for the group.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay. And then we continue to work on requests for consensual annexations. With operational efficiencies, you all are well aware, we've been having one-on-one meetings each week with the directors. I've really enjoyed them, and our directors have too. It's been a great time to talk about operational things that we don't, you know, get to talk about all the time with the board. Another item we wanted to bring up is we have an opportunity right now with our Technology Department, where we're looking at what the modern needs are and reorganizing where appropriate. We're also looking at opportunities where maybe, you know, is the way we're providing that service making sense, and is there another way to do it? Particularly, I think GIS is a good example right now, and not filling all of those vacant positions until we figure out where we really want to head with that. So we have a unique opportunity right now with the transition in the Technology Department and with the new Chief Technology Director to really look at our Technology Department. We also are continuing to prioritize online services. We're working towards online property tax payments this fall, and also we have started slowly rolling out some electronic, some online permitting to supplement some of the electronic plan review that we rolled out a couple of years ago. So it was actually our Communications Manager idea to highlight this efficiency, and I think it's a big one, because we're spending a lot of internal staff time, and it'll be a nice enhancement for our residents.
Yeah, online, online services, fully utilizing the software that the city's committed to.
That's right.
Trying to be more efficient for, for our citizens, you know, when they pay their tax bills or however, I think is really important. And just overall, maybe just to reemphasize, you know, that the city has, you know, over 300 employees. And, you know, that's a lot of people out there doing a lot of different things, and companies, private, the private sector is always looking for a more efficient way to conduct business. And I think that we owe it to our taxpayers to do exactly the same thing. And our department managers are, you know, they, I know they are, but everybody should be tasked to make sure that, that we're being efficient. Not that we want people working 60 or 70 hours a week, but that, you know, we can, we do as much as we possibly can with, with the people, and if we can do, you know, more with less, then we figure out a way to do that. Technology is advancing. Software is an example, the software, you know, the remote app, you know, all those things, when we employ technology, you know, that, that basically provides some efficiencies. We're doing things in a more efficient manner than we did previously. And that, that changes the scope of work for the people that have been doing it, and we just have to take advantage of those opportunities.
Michelle, I just wanted to commend the directors and the staff for the informational meetings. I thought those were absolutely, or they are absolutely excellent, and it gives you a good picture of what really goes on. Obviously, as you said earlier, we don't get a real picture of what the staff does every day to make the city what it is. So I thought those, I think those are great, great times. Appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you. They put a lot of work into it, and I think it was one of our city manager's ideas to bring that, so we're enjoying them as well. Okay. With downtown, we really wanted to focus on, we've hosted several successful downtown summer events that are new. The Cocktail Trail has been a big hit. We had a successful Fourth of July back on the riverfront, and there has been a new event with Downtown Live. There is some new activity happening in Main Street. We have some new board members that have been, have been and are being appointed. We got, you know, this was announced last time, but we did receive the full Main Street accreditation, and then they're also, Main Street's also working on ways that we can share with the community, different ways to get involved with Main Street and downtown. So now the mayor and I talked a lot about this, about kind of the activity that's happening within Main Street.
Downtown's the core, you know, of, of the city and really the community, you know, and so, you know, paying close attention to it is, you know, I think really important. I'm really excited about the Main Street board appointments, you know, and some of the things that they're going to, I feel like be able to accomplish. I feel really good as the construction on the hotel gets started, and everybody's, there's a lot of angst, you know, in the community among shoppers as well as business owners. You know, having a strong board there, you know, figure out a way to, to look at the best ways to do things. Parking, you know, is an issue. Parking is something that, you know, people are going to bring up first, first chance they get, and so looking at opportunities to create additional parking opportunities, whether it be through, you know, ballet services or anything. I mean, I think that's, that's going to be something that we need to, we need to focus on, and.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great, that's a great point, Mayor. I know we've been having internal meetings, talking a lot about the parking. We do have some additional parking promotional materials that we're working through to roll out. Also, I believe Nick can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think part of that Main Street initiative to work on that Third Street corridor is to also make it inviting as people park in that city parking lot through walking through downtown. That will make that a little bit more inviting of a walk into our downtown businesses. So you're right, that, that has been heard, and we are working on that internally.
We can just do a lot of things to help ourselves.
Yeah.
I mean, that's kind of the bottom line, you know, we just need to, you know, we need to think, think like a shopper, think like a visitor, think like a tourist, you know, when you come into town, and that, I think that's something that'll serve us well. Okay? Any? Good? Keep going?
With housing, we did complete the surplus, surplus property sale with transferring five properties. We did enhance the process through an interactive property map, which was one of the goals of the item, of the priority, and provided house plans. Another new item is the Planning Department has been developing some draft incentives for South Side residential grant and some commercial grant opportunities we'll talk about in a little bit. I don't want to get too far ahead out of the South Side Committee, but essentially it's looking at a reimbursement program for rehabilitation, rehabilitation projects up to a certain dollar amount. So that will, the Planning Department will be working with the South Side Steering Committee on those different grant opportunities.
So I think that's, Darren and I actually had a quick conversation about that today, but I think that's, for us, as it relates to South Side and the housing initiative in general, I think it's the next big thing for us. You know, and that's to figure out, you know, two things. How do we incentivize current homeowners, you know, to fix up or keep up their houses and their property? And number two, how do we incentivize developers, private, or, you know, small, small mom and pop shops, or some larger company who would kind of want to come in and develop housing solutions for, you know, that part of town? And I think it's going to require the city really to, to partner with them in some way, shape, or form, way, shape, or form. We certainly need to vet, you know, any developers, anybody that's, that we're going to work with, that they have the capabilities, you know, and that, you know, any money that the city would put in, you know, would be well utilized and would work for the long-term benefit of the community. But I think that, I just think that's the next big thing in housing for us, is figuring that out.
Mayor, you sent, go ahead.
All I was going to say is, I know that we were also looking at housing, though, at all cross ranges. We just need more housing.
We do.
Because South Side provides a great opportunity, but there's plenty, I mean, we need it all over.
We do. We do, and, you know, and that, that rolls up under Nick. You know, Nick's got a lot on his plate these days, but, so, you know, Nick and I talked about, you know, possibly having a meeting with developers or, you know, so we, we need to figure out, you know, how to do that all over the city, and so.
Mayor, a few weeks back, you sent us all some information on some housing opportunities in Hopkinsville, Kentucky. And you asked us to look at it and read it, and as I'm, as I'm listening to Michelle, I'm thinking that some of what we saw in that video, in that information you sent us, might be, might work well for Paducah, and to Commissioner Wilson's point, might work well all over Paducah. So I think it's worth us maybe looking at some more and talking about.
Nick, did you send that? Did you suggest the Hopkinsville to me? Somebody did, that's where.
I think, I think.
Yeah, I think I did. I can, I can take a look and resend it. Let me make a note, I'll, I'll do that.
And to your point, Commissioner Wilson, the comp plan, you know, the Planning Director and I also talked about that comp plan will also provide us a lot, a lot of information about housing, you know, what we have in the community and future goals, too, that will, we talked about potentially help us look at some incentives and some different things, too. So really with housing, the comp plan will play a role in that as well.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay.
With minority inclusion, I wanted to highlight that we do have staff and elected officials attending the PDAB meetings, and our HR Director has been participating in those, and I think her and Commissioner Wilson attended a training, a kind of virtual training recently. The mayor and I talked really about our involvement, also the city's involvement with the first ever Juneteenth in collaboration with the Carson Center and the Paducah McCracken County NAACP. We also co-sponsored the August 8th celebration, and we had some more participation in the parade than we have in the past. So those are a couple of outreach items with the community that we've been focusing on. Internally, we're really looking at our organizational inclusion efforts. Our HR Director has done some best practice research, and we've been talking with the city manager, we want to just make sure we do it right, but we're looking at setting up the process for some type of inclusion statement, goals for our organization, that's where we're headed. So we're developing kind of that scope of work and what that process looks like for us.
The August 8th parade was amazing. Actually, I mean, it was, and I participated in it, and, you know, we had people from out of town, families, you know, that, that haven't been back to Paducah in a long time. I actually rode on the trolley with the Paducah Tillman High School football team of 1972. And I had to listen about, I had to listen to how great that team was.
That's right.
You know, by the time that I got off the trolley, I think that team could have beaten any team in, in the United States. But it was, it was a great experience, and they were obviously very proud of the, you know, their accomplishments, and so there were just big crowds, and I was just, you know, I was really proud of, of the effort that the community put into that. And of course, Juneteenth, I worked with JW and others, you know, to put on a successful program there, so I think, you know, we've done really good in there. I would point out that WKCTC has had a minority business initiative going on, and I know that Commissioner Wilson has been involved through the chamber. I know that I've, I've been involved, certainly trying to support the effort, get people, and I think it was pretty amazing, actually, some of the, some of what we accomplished. Now, what we really need to happen from that is we need businesses to, you know, to expand, minority businesses to expand, we need more to start up, but it was a darn good start. So we got some, you know, some good progress made with that, and feel really good about it. So as they say, the proof's in the pudding, but, but we've got to get, we've got to do more of that, you know, so. And then, what's the next steps on the, within the city's organization?
We, we're developing a process to, basically, we're looking at developing an inclusion statement. I know that's something Commissioner Wilson has talked about in the past, and setting organizational goals for us around. So what, you know, what, what does that process look like? You know, who do, it could have some staff involvement, who do we talk to, to really develop that, so that, really that process is what we're trying to develop right now.
And then also, we're looking at not only best practices in the area, but also from, you know, around the country. You know, Michelle and I will be attending the International City Managers Association's conference in a couple of weeks, and one of the sessions that, that I'm involved with there is the Equity and Inclusion Group, and how, and kind of, it's a lunch into where we share ideas and learn from one another, and so we're taking those intentional efforts to do that. And then also, Mayor, just to step back for a second, you talked about the development of entrepreneurial and the minority inclusion, just to share with the rest of the commission, Commissioner Henderson heard this when we were with Wayland, that's one of the things that they are very active in as part of their development of the hotel and the retail space is to have minority inclusion as part of that. So we've had those types of conversations as well when they present themselves.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because when we, when we brought up, you know, our minority inclusion initiative, I mean, Wayland really kind of jumped all over it and said that they'd like to participate, and they had some, they actually had an entrepreneur from, a minority entrepreneur from Dayton.
Dayton, Ohio.
Who they said would be glad to come down here and, and talk, and very successful lady, I think I recall, and has a successful track record, so this is, this was very, a very positive thing, so. Okay, I think we can move on.
Okay. So next we have protecting key historical and cultural resources. I got a, I have a lot of jargon in that first one. I know Commissioner Wilson brought this up earlier, but we did, the city manager did get authorization, authorization from the board to enter into negotiation, and it's looking at the preservation of Cotel Metropolitan, Columbia Theater, you know, our South Side neighborhood, so those negotiations are currently underway.
On Stuart Nelson.
And Stuart Nelson, yes, thank you.
And just as an update on that, we're waiting on some finalizing dates with them to be able to, to get those locked down into that contract for you to be able to sign, Mayor.
Okay, great.
And the Civic Center construction documents, we recently had a meeting, they're at 95% completion. Go ahead, yeah.
And update as of this afternoon, we anticipate within about three weeks being able to be ready to issue the RFP for construction.
In about three weeks?
As they finalize the rest of the documents, they were, they're getting in, and they were meeting in a couple of weeks on the, getting the final schematics all together. We did have some abatement things we were working through, and we wanted to get those addressed outside of the RFP process that we could take care of, outside of that, and so not to draw the cost, and so we're finalizing that, and we hope to have the RFP in, in a form to be able to release in about three weeks.
Okay.
Yep, I'll keep rolling. The South Side, we've talked about a little bit, that Steering Committee has been meeting, I think they've had five meetings, they've been focusing on Coleman Park. We talked a little bit about the residential grants with the commercial. What has been drafted so far, and again, not to get out ahead of that committee, is looking at. What has been drafted so far, and again, not to get out ahead of that committee, is looking at potential facade and beautification grants up to a certain dollar amount. So that's kind of what's been drafted right now for the South Side commercial businesses. But of course, planning will work with the South Side Committee through that, to make sure that's the most effective use for those dollars.
You know, I say this every time we go over commission priorities. So the South Side project was well received.
Yes.
Both within the community and, and outside of the community as being a big, a big successful initiative. The pressure for us is to, I, I think, I don't know if that's the right word, but we have to continue, because it's such a large project that we have to be able to focus on the things that we need to do where we can really make headway, because the area of the South Side is, is very large. And we talked about this before. It goes all the way from the courthouse, all the way out, you know, to the county line. And, you know, it's just a, it's a lot of, it's a lot of square acres or square, square miles. And, and so we, we have to focus, but we have to make sure that we, that we keep the momentum going. So, and as we mentioned, we got a county commissioner here tonight, and I know our county commissioner was at our South Side meetings, and he was vocal and active in those, in those meetings. And we sure would like to see the county as, you know, as one of our partners going forward. I think there's an opportunity for us to partner in a couple of areas, so we need to kind of vet that and figure out how to do that. But, but a lot of that area out there that people consider to be the South Side is really county. And so, you know, people, you know, we had a lot of county residents at that, at that meeting, actually, you know. And, and actually, going back to, you know, the August 8th trolley ride, I mean, a lot of those folks, you know, who don't even live here, you know, were had picked up on the South Side project and were, you know, very positive. So, you know, there's, like I said, there's lots of pressure to keep the momentum going, so. Okay.
Okay. With trails and bike paths, we've talked about Phase Five for the Greenway Trail will be part of the build grant process. With this, we did want to highlight, we've talked internally a lot about how to get the bike path discussion started. We talked with the city manager about the board really expressing the need to, wanting to collect feedback from the community of what they would like to see in the bike lanes. You also mentioned how, you know, planning has a lot on their plate right now. So this will be, we are currently recruiting for a new planning position, and this is something that that position will work on. So that's kind of what, we're recruiting that position, and then we hope to get some momentum on, on the bike lane discussion.
It would be interesting to have a, a community meeting.
Yeah.
You know, kind of like we did the South Side meetings, you know, to talk about bike paths. Be, be very interesting to get community input on that.
Yeah.
So that's something that, it's going to take a lot, a lot of effort there.
Yes.
So we're going to have to figure it out, and so we'll keep, keep working on it.
That's right. That recruitment is active, so we hope to have that position filled soon. This is, these are the three continuous improvement items. I just want to go over a couple very quickly. We did increase the funding for the city facilities maintenance to 1.1 million. We are working with the directors to really, specifically the public safety right now, to really highlight what are their top priorities and what we can fit within budget. So we have picked some high priority projects for the fire station, you know, over at 911 potentially, and we are updating those numbers and hoping to get started on that. So that process is underway internally. And then we do have stormwater projects underway with the $4 million from ARPA. Anyone who has been over by the Buckner Lane Bridge or South 25th Street, I know our city engineer is here, has seen those projects going on.
Yeah, it cost me some time this last week. I couldn't get through there.
And there are stormwater, you know, aspects to that, which I think is important, you know, to remember, especially that Buckner Lane Bridge replacement project. And I think we've talked about the outdoor sports facilities, so unless there's anything else.
We have, and I, I had a, a quick conversation with John at JSA today. I ran into him over at Civic Center, and I was just pointing out that, that, you know, I attended the DLG meeting in Louisville last week, and there was a lot of discussion about, you know, stormwater and, you know, different, you know, different grant opportunities. And, you know, there's been so much, so much money flushed through the United States economy, you know, in the last couple of years as a result of COVID, and it's just hard for me to believe that there's not, you know, not some bigger grants out there, you know, perhaps available for us. I'm, I'm not sure where, how, when, why, but, but stormwater continues to be, I mean, it's a long-term issue for us. It's a long-term issue for the community. And it's one of those things that, we haven't heard much about it lately, but, you know, give us a rain like they had in Eastern Kentucky, you know, three weeks ago, and, you know, our room will be full. And so I, I don't think it's something that we can really, you know, just ignore. So it's something we have to keep, keep talking about. Maybe, you know, continuous improvement is where it probably needs to be, but.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to make sure I take the opportunity to, to, I mean, thank the board, our city manager, leadership team, our team, because this, all of this work, while I'm the one up here presenting and we're talking about it, does not, you know, just, it's a group effort. It's a team effort to get these done and get everybody moving in the same direction to accomplish these priorities. So I want to make sure that, give kudos to everyone who has an impact on these.
You know, and I would just point out, I know Nick sent me an email this week thanking me for some support, you know, on, on Main Street and downtown, and, and I'd just point out the rest of the commissioners, you know, that, that our support and encouragement in areas with the staff, with the directors, I think, I, I think it's important. You know, there's not only the recognition of their, of your efforts out there, whether it be, you know, Amy in Parks or Rick in, in engineering, I mean, but just not only the encouragement, but just the, you know, the helping, helping you all focus on the areas that are important to us, because if they're important to us, that's because, that's because they're important to the community, because we are elected by the community, you know, and, and so we try to communicate those things. A lot of times I end up communicating things about, you know, people that, you know, just want to bend my ear about one thing or another. I know, send, send emails back and forth, you know, to follow up. But, you know, all of that's important is to make sure that we get the community feedback out there, not only to all of us, but to, to all of you all, because we're, it's kind of the ears, you know, of what's happening in the community, you know. So anyway, I'll, I'll shut up from there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle, very much. Okay, comments from city manager?
Yeah, Mayor, just a couple of items, and, you know, Michelle was very kind to, to acknowledge all the work and very truthful, acknowledge all the work of our team. But she's had to do a lot of heavy lifting also with some of the turnover and, and kind of working through some of the issues. And so, Michelle, we're appreciative of that as well. Today we had the job fair. Mayor, you mentioned that you were out there. I was out there. There's, and even though at one point the judge executive and I were both at the pilgrim booth, we weren't looking for jobs unless there's taste tester jobs available. We both volunteered for that. Quality control, we said, we could, we could manage. But Lindsay's got some updates from that for us.
Yeah, so that was today between 10:00 and 3:00, and I know we had really good representation from our city employees. We had four booths with PD and Fire, and HR did a wonderful job of, of helping to coordinate everything for that. I did hear from Mary Ann Metlock this afternoon with the West Kentucky Workforce Board, and she said there was 100 employers and 352 job seekers that came through today. So it was a really successful day for sure in the city, partners with them, the county partners with them, the Chamber of Commerce and other local partners, partner to put that on. They've, we've done that for the last couple of years, and it's been really successful.
And I did, I did register, so we'll see what kind of job may come through.
You don't take a taste tester job at the judge.
Better not call me for, better not call me for a reference.
Well, we appreciate, you know, Lindsay and Pam and, and the team that worked, you know, with that as being partners. They put a lot of time and effort in that. We appreciate to make it successful. And then all of our team members that, that supported that, we're appreciative of that as well. Mayor, you mentioned, as we were talking about the South Side and the recognition that that has not only garnered within our local community and our region, but we learned today that, and we had taken great pride in the efforts of the South Side work and submitted that for recognition for City of the Year with KLC. And we learned today that the upcoming conference, that we will be recognized as a KLC award winner for, for that project in the City of the Year, and that is, that goes to the, the great credit to, to everybody that had a hand in doing that and continues to have a hand in that, so.
Those were some hot Sundays. I mean, I know that was just a part of it, but.
Yeah.
That's great. That's great. Congratulations.
It's awesome.
It's teamwork, most definitely. And then just lastly, we will be bringing to you at the next commission meeting a request to make an application for a federal award. It's a, has to do with, we've talked about some of the safety, bike safety, pedestrian safety, that type of thing. There's an opportunity for us to apply in working with the, the state and looking at the area there on Broadway where Lone Oak Road comes in, in that intersection where we know we had, earlier this year, we had a young lady that was struck by a car in that area. We've done some work with the transportation cabinet of putting in some crossing walk signals, but this application would give us the opportunity to apply for several million dollars to re-envision and potentially reconstruct that area to make it safer. So it's, you know, early process, but the app, it starts with you authorizing the application and, and concept for us to go forward with that. It'll be highly competitive. But to your comments earlier, Mayor, we, we need to continue those efforts where they present themselves and apply for those opportunities and those funds. And so we'll be bringing that to you at our first meeting in September, author, requesting the authorization to, to apply for those grant funds in that area.
Now, that's the project, I don't know if we've talked about it publicly, but that's the project that would straighten out, you know, the, the, when you're coming from, on Lone Oak Road toward the Coke plant, if you're going to go out 32nd Street, you take a left and then a right to make that, that turn. And the state wants to straighten that road and take that zigzag out. And, you know, I'm not sure exactly how they envision it. It would, would affect the traffic that goes directly by the Coke plant. So we have to figure out, you know, parking and the way all that, that works. But it's been on their six-year plan or eight-year plan, whatever, for, for some time. And I think it, you know, to me, I think it makes a lot of sense. I mean, the businesses in the area have to figure out how to re, re-envision some of the things that they're doing as a result of that, but.
Yeah, the, the application, again, is just the first step on that. Before we even though brought it to, or before we bring it to you, we wanted to be intentional about having conversations with the major stakeholders in that area. And our team, Hope and Rick and Nick, have been working with those. And actually, this afternoon, Michelle and I also joined Nick and Rick with, with speaking to, to one of the stakeholders. Other, it's some great input there, some, some great ideas and suggestions of how we could. But that stakeholder group also includes the school system, is as you are aware, Clark Elementary, the, the Q line comes down. And, and if we are successful in acquiring funds to look at that, it will address part of that as well and how we can reconfigure that to increase the safety, because it is tied to the safety, both vehicular, bike, and pedestrian safety. And so we're excited about that opportunity to bring before you to request that permission to apply for those funds. That's all I have.
Okay, comments from any of the board? Are we good? Yeah, I think it was a good meeting. So I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Well, we do have comments from the audience. I think the way that, that works is you're supposed to sign up, but did, but I think you should come on up, JW, and make your comments.
Well, you can rest assured, it ain't nothing negative, that's for sure. And I appreciate that, because I, I didn't know I was supposed to sign up. But I, I want, first and all, giving honor to God and to the mayor and the commissioners. I talked to the mayor a little bit about this, and for the record, God knows, I really appreciated working with him during the Juneteenth. I just didn't, to be honest with you, it was really amazing that we talked to one another about that, because I didn't want to see the city of Paducah. Here it is, a national holiday, and we didn't have a Juneteenth celebration. And so the mayor and the county, of course, the county came through for us also, and it just really made me feel good. But then we had the feedback from the 8th of August committee, and, but it worked out. It really and truly worked out, and, and I wanted to personally come here and say that I really do appreciate what happened during that particular situation, and it sounds like that we're going to do it again next year. And, but, you know, it was probably good that the way we handled that, because it sounds like that this 8th of August deal has been going on for, I knew it had been going on for about 100 years, but I didn't know it was almost 150 years. This woman, this historian came, came to Paducah and said that possibly Paducah might be named as one of the most, the biggest continuous celebration of the 8th of August, which is the same thing in my heart as Juneteenth, you know, an over celebration of slavery. But the part that I talked to the mayor about was the fact that I want you all to know that, and I gotta brag, and I told the mayor the same thing, I gotta brag to the city, the county, and the state. I live in the county. Of course, my businesses are here in the city. But, boy, during the 8th of August, it was just, it just made, made me look good, being the president of NAACP, that all the roadwork going on, and it wasn't just in the west end, or it just wasn't in this particular section of the town. It was all over the city of Paducah and the county and the state road. So, I mean, the roadwork has just been, Mayor, did I talk to you about this?
Yes, you did.
I actually did. I mean, it's, I mean, the side, not only the roads, the sidewalks, and it's just a blessing what's happening. It makes us look like that we're moving in the right direction, and it ain't just one-sided in the city of Paducah. And it ain't one-sided in the county. It's, it seemed like it's overall that we're doing this thing together. And the part about the sports complex, I wanted to make sure that I, I don't know if all this is true, but from the outside looking in, it made us feel good from our city government that the fact that they kind of held out on the situation, because of, we know that 911 is important, but we also found out that the city of Paducah said, now, wait a minute, county, we gotta make sure that Stuart Nelson's situation is taken care of. So we've already heard that the reason why the city was kind of holding out on a few things was because of 911 and the upgrade of Stuart Nelson. And so I just wanted to say to the mayor and the commissioners that we truly appreciate your leadership, is what it amount to. And that, I, I've already missed, I was supposed to be at another meeting at 6 o'clock, so. That's all I wanted to say, is the fact that I really do appreciate what's happening in the city of Paducah. And it's all positive. It really and truly is.
Well, thanks, JW. I really appreciate the compliment. You know, I like to tell people all the time, flattery will get you everywhere.
But, but I, but, but now, to, to explain to these commissioners, did I not talk to you about this same subject?
JW, you and I are brothers. I mean, we, we've been working closely on a couple of, couple of projects, and anytime you call me. anytime you call me, I mean, or I call you, I mean, we pretty much instantly connect, uh, you know, to get things done for the community and another thing we talked about, uh, that you didn't mention and that is that I think both of us feel that we are making some significant progress.
I really believe that.
In the community.
I believe that.
And, uh, it's been one of the initiatives that this, uh, commission set out and, um, it's a long, hard road and a long, hard battle, uh, but we are, we are making some significant progress.
I really believe that. And, and off the record, I guess I, I need to mention this, uh, the mayor already knows about it, cause I met with him about it, uh, and it ain't about JW, but I had a donor to talk to me about possibly, uh, making sure that I had the funding to purchase that old Lincoln property and, uh, I could die tomorrow, but if the Lord gives me will to probably last another year or so, I'm gonna make sure that that property is gonna be developed and I've already got, I've been working with this P, whatever it is, now PEX associate or whatever, but they, they, they volunteered all their work and everything and we've out, 50 years ago, WC Young, the governor, gave him $75,000 to start the community center and I know for my heart, in my heart, that we've outgrown the community center and with the Civic Center situation, it's already been, uh, kind of downsized in a way of speaking, then we need something different in the African-American community and, and I say that, I don't mean it to the point that, uh, but a lot of times you got people that can't afford maybe the, the Carson Center or the, uh, Convention Center or whatever, but I'm determined to build this building right there, own the property, we own it. It's in, it's, it's in, it's in the Lincoln Foundation name, so we own their property and I'm determined to get that done. It'd be a complex that we'll be proud of in this community, that's all there's to it. That's all I got, thank you, sir.
Thanks JW, appreciate it very much.
I gotta go to that other meeting.
I have a feeling we'll be hearing more about the, uh, the JW's foundation and, uh, the, the, the building that he wants to build, so. Um, okay, uh, we will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.